All right. Go ahead and get the Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting started. It is October 26, 2017. It is 6:04 PM. And so we are ready to start the meeting. And so I'm calling the meeting to order. And at this time, we will have our invocation. And I'll call on our Vice President Darryl Wildcat if he would voice a prayer for us.
Everyone join in? No, it is. Thank you, be blessed and bestowed upon us, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, ask you, you would please every one of us, Heavenly Father, thank you for the God's mercy you give with everyone to be here tonight, Heavenly Father. Ask you to bless all those who are in attendance here this night, Heavenly Father. Be with us, Heavenly Father, when we make decisions to help more people move forward, Heavenly Father. Help us to discuss in a good way things that we can do, Heavenly Father. And without being personal, Heavenly Father, because we are here to work with the people and help the people, Heavenly Father. And I ask that you be with us and that you show mercy to each and every one of us, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, I ask in Jesus' name, Lord and Savior. Amen.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for that. I want to thank all the folks that are here this evening. And we usually always wait to the end. Anne, what do you have to eat tonight?
Peeling and clawed potatoes, lots of lots of rum. There are lots of rum. And we have two bags with candy in it. They're $3 for giving in away Monday.
All right.
You have two chances.
All right. Okay. Well, good. So for those of you watching on YouTube, she's always has treats for us and she sells for the travelers or the elders and always have her at the end. And by then, it's too late. So, thank you, Anne.
Oh, thank you.
So. All right. So at this time, we'll have a roll call.
President Pratt.
Here.
Darryl Wildcat.
Here.
Patricia McCray, here. Angela Thompson, here. Sammy Adson.
Here.
Donna Hare.
Here.
Charles Loachey.
Here.
Charles Knight.
Here.
All right. And everybody's here to declare a quorum. And so at this time, we've moved to item number three, the approval of the agenda.
President Pratt.
Yes.
Under item three, we need to flip B and C on that.
Okay. So we need to, instead of starting with B, we will start with C?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Just remind me of that one.
Perdón, Pratt.
Yes.
I think there needs to be a D. Add the Pawnee C. Not C, it's C, correct?
What?
On item C.
On item C?
Should be C, S-D-E-D, correct?
You're on the wrong one.
You got the wrong agenda?
Yeah. This is dated October 26.
Okay, we can entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
It says it's October 26.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
That was a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That confusion's resolved.
Okay. That's what we proposed last meeting. We had a wrong name over there. And so the right answer is on there.
Okay.
No more corrections. All right. Are we ready to proceed? If there's no more corrections, I make a motion to accept the agenda. Have a motion on the approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
No, no seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl Wildcat.
Yes.
Patricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare, yes. Charles Loachey.
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Okay, the agenda is approved. We move to item number four, the Pawnee Business Council President's Report. I attended the NCAI last week, and that was a good meeting. I know Donna Hare and Patsy also attended. And so I'm not going to say a whole lot about the meeting from my point. I will say this, that Jefferson Keel, the Lieutenant Governor for the Chickasaws, was elected President of NCAI. And so we were supportive of that. The, saw a lot of Pawnees up there. Saw Bunkie Echo Hawk and Lael. Lael Echo Hawk was up there. And just a lot of Pawnees. And it's always good to see them up there and being a part and active. We have had a, we had a direct service tribe meeting that I was supposed to attend, but I had a funeral this last week in our family, so I was unable to attend. However, we were, attended the STACK meeting, which never was able to really give information on. And, you know, once again, we are very concerned with the President's budget, budget concerning health, specifically IHS, but not only IHS, but everything that falls under the Secretary's Tribal Advisory Committee, everything that falls under HHS. And, you know, right now, the President and his budget has really proposed many, many cuts, many cuts that would affect Indian country. But, you know, the Senate and the House, you know, have really fought back against that. And so right now, everything's in flux. They're really, really, we won't know anything probably till December, when the Congress takes up the budget. But, you know, we have really voiced our concerns on the President's budget. One of the things I will say is that I was able to visit with Janie Hip. And Janie Hip is the, works at the University of Arkansas. And she gave a report on the Native Farm Bill. And, you know, we need to get that reauthorized, have any specific provisions in the Indian Farm Bill. And Janie Hip is the one who's going to lead the effort that we're going to make as far as our ACT program here at the Pawnee Nation. And so it was good to visit with her and to see her. And so we have, we have a lot of things that's working on the ACT. One of the things I wasn't able to report on also was the UNICOT, the United Indian Tribes of Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. And one of the things that we are looking at is the gaming compacts that are coming up. And the efforts that the State of Oklahoma is making to try to open up negotiations with the different tribes. And so, you know, really, that's going to be a big emphasis in the next couple of years. The compacts are up 2020. You know, we've been advised by those in the know on Indian country is that we as Indian nations shouldn't do anything and just let them roll over. But, you know, Oklahoma is really striving to make hen roads with somebody and, you know, try to undermine the compacts that are already in existence. So, you know, the big thing that is really affecting tribes right now is the land into trust issue. Congress has proposed through the Trump administration, many extra regulations which would just make the process just impossible, impossible to get land into trust for anybody. And, you know, the voice of Indian nations is, well, what about the land into trust applications that are already sitting on these desks, you know, and have been already through the process? And, you know, it used to be the Undersecretary of the Interior would have the authorizations to approve these, but that authorization has been taken away. And they're trying to bring the authorization to Congress. So if an Indian tribe wants to put a land into trust, then you have to go through this even more complicated way of application process. And then it goes to Congress. And then Congress is going to have to say whether or not these lands are going to be put into trust. And, you know, the thing that we have been told is that the driver in all this is that the tribes who are trying to get land into trust for casinos, and not just casinos, but for business development, any kind of business development, that's where the holdup is and that's where the trouble is. And so, once again, it's always a fight, you know. We seem like we get a little much and it seems like, you know, they try to take it away. So right now, that's where we're at in this land into trust. At NCAI, they had a consultation, listening sessions on this. Tribes were adamant, they were very vocal and very united against our stance against these new regs and things. We're just hoping it's not a done deal, you know. And so, you know, right now, in health, BIA, land into trust, you know, all of these things, the Department of the Interior, all of these efforts, and it seems like everything is up in the air right now. And Congress and the Trump administration has proposed a lot of new things. And we've looked at these things and they're not helpful to us. They're not helpful to the Indian nations. And so we are voicing our concerns. We're just hoping that someone will listen to us and Congress will listen to us. So it's a very touchy time, very touchy time for the Indian nations and things. And so, you know, I don't know about you, I always watch a lot of CNN and listen to CNN and listen to the news and things and try to keep up, get a lot of updates through the different federal agencies and different ones. And there's just a lot of things that are really moving. And so it's a complicated time right now, Indian country, in our country right now. But, you know, we still do what we can. So I'm going to give that report, and I'm going to start with Donna, Donna down here, and we'll move this way, and give any kind of reports, travel reports or committee reports or any kind of reports. And then at the end, we'll have some questions.
Thank you, President Pratt. I attended the National Congress of American Indians last week in Milwaukee. And I attended the listening session that President Pratt spoke of about putting land into trust. And yes, the tribes are all opposed to it. And it runs counter to what Zinke's themes for his administration is. And those themes are sovereignty, self-determination, respect, economic freedom, and reduce regulations. And so for this land into trust, multiple regulations added to it instead of reducing. So it's going against, you know, what he says the themes are. There was a very interesting listening session. And it was on the Act to Regulate Indian, the Indian Traders Regulations of 1790. And that's the correct year, 1790. It was updated in 1957. And so one of the comments, and they're rushing it through, comments are due on October 30th. I don't know if we commented yet, but I've got some draft language here for the comments that NCAI distributed on talking points. So there were a lot of different comments from tribal members, and I think one of them, one, two, there are two notable ones. One was from the Menominee, and they wanted to know, what's the rush? It's been 200 years. And so, you know, why is this being rushed through? The other was from Ron Allen, and he was elected Treasurer by acclamation. So he ran and opposed for Treasurer of NCAI. And he stated that the local and state governments will object to the new regs because 99% of the services won't make it to the reservation. And all they're trying to do is, you know, reach into our economies to support theirs. He said that they, he's telling the BIA they need to support us and that they may say there's a conflict, but it's the same intergovernmental conflicts that go on, you know, with other entities. And he said that location was a big deal. And it has to be clear that, you know, that our tribal governments have more than, you know, just one governmental function. So what they want, what the tribes are proposing for the language to be is it's two points. The first is any person or business desiring to trade with Indians on any Indian reservation shall be permitted to do so under the laws of the tribal government. And that's a change. Trade and business activity on trust or restricted fee lands is not subject to any fee, tax, assessment levy, or other charge imposed by any state or political subdivision. That's it. That's all that's included in the new language that NCAI is proposing. So we need to comment on that. I also attended the Bureau of Indian Education Listening Conference. And I do have to say that there were too many listening conferences at one time there. They had several at the same time. So I attended the BIE and I have their strategic direction. Mr. Dearman is the director, and he's Cherokee, and he's been in the position for about a year. But I have this here and I'd like to share it, you know, with the council. We had the tribal caucuses every morning at 7:15, and I attended every morning. And what, the first order of business is when we were going to have our elections within our caucus, the Southern Plains. And then, and we had those Wednesday and Zach, what's his last name, the chairman of the Prairie Benefical Order? He's a young attorney. He's our representative, Vice President. And then they, we had to have two, every caucus had, and there's 12 caucuses from each region, we had to send two people to work the election, because this was election year for NCAI. So Bob Tipacani and I were the delegates from Southern Plains. And the election was very close. It was, for President, there were three that ran. And Cheyenne River Chief, he did not make the final round. It was between Jefferson Keel and Fon Sharpe. And so it was pretty close. It was pretty close. But it was really, it was a really good experience to work that election, because, you know, the way they ran it, they were so strict, they wouldn't even take donuts off a candidate's table, you know. They just, you know, they didn't want to be seen as, you know, being impartial or anything or compromising themselves. But Juanita Autumn, she's been, her father funded, helped found NCAI. And she started participating at a very young age, about 16. And she's an elderly lady, but she is sharp as a whip. And she just ran that election and it ran so smooth. And they had a voting booth and everything. And so it was really, it was really a neat experience to be able to, you know, get to participate in that. But it was, you know, NCAI is really good, and they present a lot of information, but it's too much. There's too many sessions at one time. And so it is good to have, you know, several people there that can, you know, cover it. But, you know, we could practically have the whole council there and it would still be hard to cover everything. So anyway, those are the main things that I wanted to report on, other than in the caucus also. The June NCAI meeting is going to be in Kansas City, Missouri. And it's up to the Southern Plains to plan it. So they're going to be the local planning committee. They're going to have an artist contest. And they will be, they will be taking digital submittals for the cover. And then they will give the artist a bio, you know, on the back and everything. So it's a good opportunity for, you know, our local artists or our Pawnee artists. And I think that's about it. There's so much, I might remember something later, but that's, move on.
All right. If you don't, Dr. Charles?
No report.
You're a part, Treasurer. You got to know what you're doing.
I don't have, I did not have any travel, but I do, all my, we did have Budget Committee and they're on the agenda, so I'm not going to go into detail until we get to this.
All right. Darryl? No travel. Patsy?
Hey, yes, I also went to NCAI. I also listened in on the U.S. Department of Interior consultation, licensed Indian traders. Yes, like Donna spoke, they're wanting to look at changing the regs and stuff. And it'll enable freer ability to conduct trade on reservations. It was pretty heated. I also was on the consultation on land into trust, but I can't bear light on that any because Ruth's pretty much covered everything I have in my notes. I also went into the implementing the Tribal Behavioral Health Agenda, meeting to discuss mental and substance abuse and the impact on Indian country. How do we do better from all agencies to meet the growing needs of the mental health, substance abuse, and behavioral health issues? Heard a lot of tribes talk on this. And, you know, it's prevalent, it is. And hopefully, we'll make headway and have to work in our own tribe with this issue. Also went into healing tribal communities, healthcare in Indian country. Update on the efforts to repeal and replace the Affordable Healthcare. What are the impacts of the President's executive orders to destabilize the ACA? I have printouts on that. It's kind of intensive. And I also listened in on the U.S. Department of Justice on listening to different parts of Indian country discuss their problems with law enforcement, tribal courts and jail systems. The main topic was lack of funding, especially on the large-based tribe. One man spoke about, I can't even remember how much land their tribe covered, and they have maybe seven officers. So it's a need out there, but they have, there's very much lack of funding. Attended the general assemblies and listened to many speakers. The outgoing President, Brian Klaske, I don't know how to pronounce his name, gave an excellent speech. And Jefferson Keel, who was elected, I listened to this man. And I wrote down three things he said that meant a lot, I thought a lot of. And he said, "Our strength comes from our sovereignty. Success comes from unity, and unity is what makes us strong. And we need to take our rightful place in government." That's all I have to report. I mean, I do have some, I printed out a lot of stuff, and I have all their handouts. Thank you.
Thank you. Sammy?
Thank you, President Pratt. I also sat in on the talking session regarding the land into trust discussion that was held. It was really interesting and alarming. We'll just have to wait and see what's going to actually happen. And that was a little over a week ago. I also am glad that Andrew and Dawn have been in discussions with the attorney up in Kansas. They'll be reporting that, I would imagine. You going to report that? No? Okay. So we have an attorney in Kansas that is going to be helping with the gift of land in Jewel County, Kansas. And he is going to do us some services, the certificate of title, initial report for a flat rate. And I thought it was very equitable and fair. And so we'll be talking about that regarding the budget mod in a little bit. So we will be circling back around and having a land management committee meeting here within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
We'll have more for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have none to report. All right. Do folks got any questions? Yes.
I said I wouldn't ask any questions, because I hope to get out of here early tonight.
No.
I appreciate your reports. Donna, you had said that there's some information that you had from the BIE. I wonder if we could post that on the Pawnee Facebook page?
Yes.
So they're likely to have access to it. Say, like Affordable Care Act information, post on our Facebook page, something with it, please. And anything else, it's all, you know, irrelevant. Thank you. Let's see. I would suggest that those of you that go, Donna made a very good point, there's so much at NCAI, it's impossible to cover the whole thing. So I would ask that you consider going to separate, different meetings, you cover more territory, more separate areas, so that instead of two or three, one of the same one, please. Just consider it. Thank you. Sammy, the Nebraska Land and Gift Attorney, can you remind me what land that is, please?
Yes, it's, I want to say it's 360 acres.
340?
340 acres. That is being donated by an elderly couple. They have bison on it at this time. That is one of our big concerns. We have, there's a herd there, which is concerning, because we need to be able to financially take care of them, you know. And so what we're doing right now is we wanted to be very proactive with this. This has only been ongoing maybe a couple of months. We wanted to be very proactive with it in case they change their minds, in case their kids change their minds, or they were to expire. So we, we being our Attorney General and Andrew jumped in and got in contact with the attorney that specializes in this type of stuff. And we're going to move forward with it. We're planning on, as we move forward, we're going to have to have some type of person there taking care of the stock there. And I don't know if it's going to be somebody local or somebody here that's interested in it. We're not that far. But we are moving forward with that land acquisition as a donation from this generous couple.
Wonderful. Thanks so much.
territory, more separate areas, so that instead of two or three, one of the same one. Please, just consider it. Thank you. Uh, Sammy, the Nebraska land and gift attorney, can you remind me what land that is, please?
Yes, it's, I want to say it's 360 acres.
340?
340 acres. That is being donated by an elderly couple. They have bison on it at this time. That is one of our big concerns. We have, there's a herd there, which is concerning because we need to be able to financially take care of them, you know. And so what we're doing right now is we wanted to be very proactive with this. This has only been ongoing maybe a couple of months. We wanted to be very proactive with it in case they change their minds, in case their kids change their minds, or they were too excited. So we, we being our Attorney General and Andrew jumped in and got in contact with the attorney that specializes in this type of stuff. And we're going to move forward with it. We're planning on, as we move forward, we're going to have to have some type of person there taking care of the stock there. And I don't know if it's going to be somebody local or somebody here that's interested in it. We, we're not that far. But we are moving forward with that land acquisition as a donation from this generous couple.
Wonderful. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I will say this, that Patsy tagged along with me all the, all the meetings down there because she was, has a lot of hard, hard times with acronyms and the information and what it means. And so she was sitting there and I'd be listening and she'd be talking to me about, what are they talking about? And thanks, so she, she, we went together to a lot of meetings because she just wanted to know how to sit there, how to listen, how to take notes, what are they talking about? And so after that, now she's on her own. She's on her own now.
That was an expensive tutorial.
I'm going to have a cheat sheet of all the acronyms. There were two terms that were very alarming up there. And one is privatization when they start talking about Indian lands. The other is turning tribes into corporations. And so those are things that we have to be very vigilant about and do what we can to protect our tribe. And one of the things that, you know, they say is, you know, it's in violation of the Constitution, the United States Constitution.
Why do you want to put land into trust?
We put land into trust because we don't have to pay taxes on it, for one thing. And then we own it and then it's ours.
And then... You put the title to the US government and you put it into trust. It's the same, it'll be the same as reservation land if you don't own it.
Well, technically.
How do you know you don't? I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we've done this on some products, trying to determine who would carry those assets. And the land was always left off of the tribe because when you put land into trust, you essentially give the title, the deed to the United States government, just as reservation land wants to the United States government. And if you were to, if the tribe were to go after, which probably not that, but then the tribe would just lose all that land. All that land was put into trust because it's no longer an asset to the tribe. And then, I mean, I'm not trying to dissuade you or anything, I'm just wondering why.
That's a larger discussion than here tonight, so.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll take that up here.
Okay.
Come visit with me.
All right.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item number six, Pawnee Business Council Travel Requests For Approval. Buddy will start down there and come this way. Do we have any travel requests?
No.
All right. Sammy?
I have none.
Patsy?
I have none.
Darryl?
None.
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 All right. Only thing coming up next month is Unicom. There's a Unicom meeting here in Oklahoma, down in Shawnee. So I think that's the only thing, it's on the 16th, I believe. Now, now, I brought up at the last meeting, council meeting that we had, is, is that they are still talking about a tribal leaders summit from the administration. And when they do that, it's always, it's almost last minute. They only give you about two weeks to get up to there. And so I had brought that up at the last meeting. Now, I don't know if they're going to do anything this year, or if it's going to be next year, or if they're ever going to do anything, you know. So, but, you know, once again, I think it's something that we, we need to go to if they do have it, so I'm just putting that out there. But they may not ever have one, but, you know, it's still being discussed, but there's no, no information. That, that's what's, that's mind-boggling about this, this whole administration is, is there's no information. There's no information, there's nothing concrete in, in anything. Everything's, you know, later, later, later. So anyway, those, those are the travel. All right. So I guess a motion for the Unicom travels, the only thing that's up.
I'll make the motion and it's approved.
Motion is made, or seconded?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? That carries. So let's move on to item number seven, the TDC report.
We're getting everybody. Staying on this land into trust topic, as you know, we've had a land into trust application setting with the Office of Indian Gaming for several months now. And in the last two weeks, we received an update finally, a movement on that application from Jeremy Lovecamp, the local BIA office. And in that update, he informed us that in the review, there were two, what they commented on as major concerns in the application. One was a road and transportation portion to contain, to contain the current carrying capacity of the roads and intersections that are impacted by the project. And they would also like the EA to compare the project chain to transportation activities to the carrying capacity of current use. And then the other major exception, if you will, was a noise level study to the surrounding homes. But our environmentalists that we used, that performed the environmental study, and our packager of the application, Elizabeth Homer, attorney in Washington DC, were able to talk them down on that one. So the only major concern that they're asking an update on now is the transportation study. So we have had a conference call since this letter came out. And Elizabeth has reached out to a company, which is, my understanding, the only company in Oklahoma that does the required study that they're asking for, and has asked for a proposal in the last two days. I received that proposal. I've sent it out to the board members today for review. If you would have asked me what I would expect of the cost of the proposal compared to what it was, I thought it came in under my expectations of what should the study be. So the board will be looking at this at our next meeting and moving on in a way they so choose. There was also, Mr. Lovecamp indicated there was some minor issues, but he was not informed what those issues were. So we're informed of the major ones. There's something that we can do that we can get down relatively quick with getting the one taken care of and getting the study formed on the other. So I find the topics not very interesting, with the possible changes on how the land into trust applications are going to be reviewed and approved, what effect that's going to have on our application. Question on that?
So is she, the attorney in Washington, is she on a flat rate, or are we just paying her more money hourly to figure all this out?
No, it was a, it was a reformed flat rate.
She didn't know that this was forthcoming? I mean...
No, they're, they were shocked to see the transportation part and all the applications that they've done, which has been many. And they said they've never been asked for this. And I think it's coming from what I heard of creating more barriers in this application Talk about the financials for September, this past month. We had a very encouraging month. The activity, the traffic that played at Stonewalk was greatly improved over August. I had mentioned in my report last month that we saw signs of improvement in August. September, there was definitely good movement, good activity. And so September was more what we're expecting to see as future activity and production there at Stonewalk. So it was exciting to look at those numbers and to see the growth from the previous months. The EBITDA number, which is a number we're all concerned with, with the bank loans and agreements, jumped over $100,000 just because of the increase in one month, September. So that was an encouraging sign for this, yes.
Do you have a ballpark percentage increase?
Approximately 14% increase across the board.
I mean, you say that that's kind of what you expect to see, or you're not talking about leveling ups right now, you're talking about increased percentage each month?
Yes, that... Uh, yes and no. September was a five-weekend month. So five-weekend months are always going to be better months, obviously. And historically, September is always a good activity month, for whatever reason, it just is. And so you have to equate some of that into it. I'm not answering your question saying that's the best we hope to do, no. But it was a big significant jump from the previous month. So to put it in actual numbers, the hold on each machine increased $15 per day. So that's a significant increase. Kootieks, our construction company, has started doing the earthquake repairs here at The Nation. It's exciting to see a construction company actually doing the work here. As far as I know, things are moving smoothly as they're progressing from building to building. It's a big undertaking, as far as organizing this all with Andrew and making office space available and all those things. But it is exciting to be doing work here at The Nation with Kootieks. This past week, I met with Pawnee Environmental and Pawnee Nation Fire. And they are putting together all of the inspections and closing documents that they're wanting to see as we are wrapping up the final inspections out at Stonewalk. And so it was a good meeting so that we can all be on the same page, what they need to see and expect to see in the regard of closing documents and inspections. That is my report. Any questions?
Yes.
I think, President Pratt?
Yes?
We had a meeting where TDC was last week. There were some heartbreaking views, and I think you should report it. These are our townspeople, these are the stakeholders, these are our tribal members, and they need to know what's going on with your financials.
Well, what we reported in the meeting was what we've been saying for the last several months is the income was down. The income was down directly associated with the construction. And as September is showing, construction is ramping up and the business is coming from that expansion.
Give us the money, Roger, how much?
Uh, how much what?
How much were, were we anticipating and what are we really getting? How's that?
I don't know what you're anticipating because I would have seen there was some communication there that I didn't know wasn't.
Angela?
But I know what we, what we told the board or council in March.
Angela? And what was that figure in March?
Uh, the figure in March was $75,000 distribution for the first two months of each quarter.
But in the spreadsheet we looked at, it was...
I'm just telling you what was told.
What was told?
And the third, the third, the third month of each quarter would be evaluated into the state of Oklahoma.
But what was the total, Roger? That's...
I don't, I don't have that either, I don't know.
It was approximately $900,000, and we're only receiving $450,000. I think that's what you want.
That's what I want to hear. So from $900,000 to $450,000. Significant. And I think the tribal members need to hear this, and they need to hear it from you. Let's, let's put loss in it and make it a rosy. I mean, let's get real and, and put it out there. This is a business. We are the stakeholders. You work for us. That's our, that's our, TDC belongs to these people here, our people. And I want to make it clear that I'm very unhappy and disappointed in it.
Yes, sir. So that was totally unexpected, or you projected that we're going to have...
That, that is why in March, we stated how the distribution was going to be figured each month. Is exactly why, was because of where we were at in trying to get through. The construction phase cost us, it hurts. We never said it wouldn't. But what we've also said is what we're going to gain from this in six months from now and the years from now. And I made a statement on several occasions, I believe it was short-term pain for long-term gain, and that's what this is.
Well, who's suffering? Who, who, it's not TDC, it's not the corporation, your corporation, our corporation. I told you last, and I'm not afraid to tell you all, I'm going to tell you like it is. I told you in that meeting that you need to put some skin in the game too. And I haven't seen that happen.
I'm sorry, but I scan the game every day.
No, I'm not...
Oh, I do. You don't, and there's your way...
Don't disrespect me here.
I'm not disrespecting you every night.
Or I'm a liar.
Roger, I want to see what TDC is going to do to reduce spend like we have to. That's my point.
And as I said in the meeting the other night, what we can do to help this more than anything is make money.
Well, in six months...
And that's, that's what, our job, is to make money.
In six months or 12, 12 months from now, I'm stupid if you got this chair. And I will apologize to you if you can make money. But I want you to be honest and I want you to be forthcoming with the people. That's my point. It's not to drag you around and, and make you feel weird or take it personally. This is a business. And if we're, we're going, if we're only going to get 50% of our revenue from TDC, people need to know that. Because it's going to be all our folks that have, are going to be shortened. It's a fact.
We send a check each month. Each month, we send a check.
I get that.
Okay. Then there's people that didn't notice those checks were. Correct?
I don't know.
Well, I would think so. Was that not a first statement?
Well, I'm sure Miss Angela knows.
Okay. So those checks were coming out each month?
Mm-hmm.
So what was the big surprise? Did, and that was, the question was raised, was, was we expecting $600,000 on the last month or something? I mean, what was happening was exactly what we said was happening back in March. And that's, that's why I don't get, I understand the pain, I do. But I, I don't get why the shock.
Okay, let me put it into perspective.
Thank you, Roger.
For the shock. We were called into a meeting in March, and I was not on the TDC board at that time. I was a lead council member. And when we were presented with the information, we were told that the projections were going to be much lower than the 1.5 million that we normally receive. And that was shock number one. Shock number two was the amount that we were being projected to receive. Instead of receiving 125,000 a month, we were going to receive 75,000 a month. That was shock number two. And then shock number three, and take us back to that meeting. You all were reporting at this, we had this big old spreadsheet. We were trying to internalize those two, two major shocks. And may, yes, maybe you said, I don't recall it, and I'm not saying you didn't. I'm just saying I didn't recall that we were going to look back at it after the third month and reevaluate it. I did not catch that. I was, like I said, I was dealing with the major shock of where we were going to come. We just finished the 2018 budget, where we were going to find the rest of the money. And so... And so you may have said that, but I think the, the, the other piece of it, Roger, is that, as was stated the other night, was that it should have been reported to us, or even, 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 even a phone call or whatever, I don't know, would have been, would have been sufficient.
With all due respect, okay, and I respect you, and I respect the way you handle yourself, but with all due respect, you were, you've been on the board and approving those amounts every month, and that's what I don't understand.
Okay, approving 75,000.
Right.
Approving 75,000, and, but, on a monthly basis, which, which you had said back in March. So why was I to determine that those, that 75,000 was going to end going into quarter five, six, seven? And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Harrison, we're not, we're not getting them on a monthly basis, are we?
No, to be fair, I was on the board here.
So, I mean, that's another issue. So, you know, yes, I, I'm on that board, but, and we look at the financials, but when you report that we're only going to pay $75,000, we're still on target based on, from that March meeting. For, so if you take that times 12 months, that's not the 900,000 amount that you quoted to us in March.
I tried...
But Angela, to be fair here, there's 13 months, but there's zero distribution that's been approved. There has been, I mean, it's there. I mean, that's what I'm...
Okay, well, but it all may then?
No, I'm not, that's what I'm trying to say, I'm not trying to do that. But it's, it's, it's being acted like, you know, and, but it's, it's been on, it's been on the financials, and I would be asked about it, and I say we can't, it puts us out of that limited pressure, I mean, that's been there. And I, I don't, I respect you, and you've always treated me with respect, and that's why I'm not trying to throw you under the bus or anything. That is why I don't understand some of this being directed at, I'm surprised everybody...
Yes, it's, it is a surprise. And like I said, when we got the, the final papers after our meeting, I provided a copy to the Budget Committee. Of course, I was focusing on the 2018, and Harrison is the one that caught the 2017 distribution.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is what we talked about the other night, it was still projections. And if we, if we perform at the level that we did September or close to it, then it's going to be better than that. But like you and I met and talked about, is it better to be conservative here or not? I mean, that's...
Well, and, and there's some, there's some other things that we'll have to take up as a TDC board from the meeting the other night in, in evaluating that, that 1.16.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a whole different thing too. And, and, and from the perspective of the council, you know, the, I know Roger comes and reports to us, but if we have some major issues, we need to take it to the board. And, and, you know, I, I'm not covering for Roger, I'm not, I allowed him to answer the questions, but I think as us as a council, we have some major issues with Roger, we need to take them up with the Board of Directors. Because apparently there are, there are some major issues.
Well, if I can speak, President Pratt, my whole thing is, is that he, he gave his report, and he said he was finished reporting, but he didn't tell the people what was going on. And that's a problem. They need to know, it has to be transparent. I'm not, you know, going to bash it because we're not making a lot of money out there, I'm just saying, be forthcoming, and, and don't try to just tell a few people and hope that we're going to be quiet, because this girl's not going to be quiet. I'm going to tell them. That's my job.
Charles? So Roger, you're saying this information that was out there, there was nothing being hit, and there wasn't anything? It was being recorded?
Yes.
If you look at minutes of past weeks, et cetera, you'll, you'll find that information?
Yes.
Okay. Were you hoping for growth out of it?
We're going to have growth, there's no, there's no question about it. It was just getting through this time.
Do we have any memories?
Roger, do you ever give these people reports?
Yes.
Do you have those reports available? Can you read them? Do you understand them? Is that the problem? Are you making a redistribution after you're giving them the report and not giving them the follow-up, the follow-up report, Roger? What are you doing in order to defer that $50,000 per month, however long it's supposed to come to the tribe? And, and let me ask you one more thing, Roger. The tribe, let me tell you something, the tribe is your, the tribe is your boss, the Business Council is your boss. And you talk about our construction company and how it is, and it's not tribes. You have to remember that. It isn't that we know how much money the casino is making, it's that it's affecting each and every one of us, and especially the elder people. When you say you're not going to fund us something, then you're taking food out of our mouths. Why aren't you funding it? We want to know. You know, you can give a better explanation. I've been in financial business for 50-some years now, and so I know exactly what you're saying, but I haven't seen any reports. And going out and going through casino finances for about 20 years now, I know what can go on at the casino. And I know how those reports can be...
Manipulated.
Right. And I can see the manipulation the second I look at the reports. And so who is looking at your reports to know that you're not manipulating them?
We, the Gaming Commission each year chooses an auditor that comes in and does an annual audit, so let's see.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
No, I want to know who in the tribe is doing it. I don't care about your...
Who, who in the tribe is doing an audit?
No, 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 no. Who is reading their financials?
Well, my board gets the financials each month.
Are they qualified?
Is the board qualified?
Mm-hmm.
I think so.
Well, I mean, are they financial experts? Are they CPAs? Are they accountants?
Yeah.
Okay. Then they're really not, but they're, they're doing a good job, I'm sure.
Right. They are, doing a good job. And then our financials also go to the Gaming Commission, where they review. And then after the financials are approved by our board, then they're sent over to the nation.
Okay.
Now, I take that back. Actually, the packet for the board meeting with the financials in them are sent usually right at the time of the board meeting to the nation.
Okay. And so everything that you have does have financials that back each other month after month after month?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking you.
Yes. And so you know, our audits from the auditors have been spotless over the last three years.
Well, Roger, I've followed many, many audits and found out that auditors will do just about anything you want them to.
Well, but I don't, I don't hire the auditor, the Gaming Commission does.
Well, no matter who does, they will do just about anything.
And the auditor that they have used for the last three years is actually, was an auditor for NIGC for 12 to 15 years, something like that, Arthur. And so he's very qualified to come in and look at them, and we have very...
She needs to know. Yeah, but I'm just saying that I've followed auditors before, and they don't, you know...
A lot of times, auditors have different opinions on things too. They may have an opinion on a regulation, one auditor, and another auditor comes in and has a bit, so that happens too. But our auditors, under what has been chosen, audit our books as been, as been obtained.
Okay.
And I'm proud of that, so.
All right. And we move on to item number eight, is the Pawnee Nation College here?
No.
Oh, it won't be in here tonight? Okay. So we will move to item number nine, which is Old Business, which is the approval of 2016 ICBG swimming pool project. And the reason why this is on here is, is because next month, and this can just be a discussion, because next month, we're, we, the Pawnee Business Council, we need to make a decision for the funding agency of, of what we're going to do with the money. So that was my question, I couldn't remember what was the cutoff date for making that decision. And so November is, is the time when we have to report back to them. Correct.
So what's the plan?
Well, again, the, the plans are, there's really not that has, that's changed, really nothing that's really changed here. I mean, we have, it's the way I see it, is the tribe has three options here. We could go with the ICBG funds, which presented, I think the council has a package of four different options, which was the cost system A, which was everything in one, which was 2.3 million, cost system B, 2.1 million, cost system C, which was like, like three lane pools, the same dimensions that we wanted, but no restroom facilities, that kind of thing, for 1.4. And then the cost system D, which was a smaller pool, which was, I think, 30 by 30 by foot, 842,000 and no restroom. So that's the ICBG plan, that hasn't changed much. And again, to remind the council that the ICBG rule restricts us about how much we could change the project and still stay within the scope of the grant. And so we've, we've gone back and forth with HUD and talked about what we can and cannot do with the project. And the cost system D is the lowest that we can get and still stay within the parameters of the grant from HUD. Yes, ma'am?
Um, not a question for you, because I've, nothing, to me, nothing has changed from it since last year.
Yeah, nothing's changed.
I think what, the decision that needs to be made by this body is to look at all the options and determine if we're going to use our reserve dollars to fund this project or not. The way, where we sit now, the difference from where we sit, sit now compared to a couple of months ago is, I don't think we have money for it. I don't, I mean, we have money in reserve, but that's going to wipe it out. And so I think us as a council need to look at those dollars and plan for what we're going to do with those dollars, and then come to a decision, put it on the agenda, and vote on it. So I make a motion to table this until the next council meeting, so we can have that meeting.
Any other discussion? Brian, do you know what that date was for the ICBG to respond or, or Andrew's?
Yeah, it was, uh...
November or something?
No, it was, uh...
February.
Yeah.
Oh, by the end of the year?
Yeah, February, no, I'm sorry, the end of the year, December.
Okay. So, 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 uh, the, the meeting in, in middle of November, we'll, we'll bring this back.
Okay.
Okay.
And would it be possible for President Pratt, would it be possible for you to bring in like the recommendation that your team has for the pool and we'll consider?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll facilitate that meeting.
Okay.
You know, I brought one of the options up as a precedent too, is we build ourselves, we can take our time, so.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Angela.
Who said it?
Mr. Rogers.
Okay, comfortable?
Daryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Loachey.
Yes.
Charles Itey.
Yes.
So Old Business, item number one is tabled. We move to item number 10, which is New Business. Number one is approval to rescind Resolution 1536 Tax Commission Appointment Eligibility.
I got a question. I, I've read through, so I know the circumstances on this, and, and I understand why we have to rescind this appointment. But my question is, what concerned me, but which may be an AG question, is whether any of the actions that occurred because of her, of this term of this tax commissioner, is it Nolan Boyd because we didn't follow the ordinance?
My opinion would be, my opinion would be that those votes that were made by margin of like one, tie-breaking vote, those could be a problem. But now, if you have other matters which carried by more than one...
Majority.
Enter good.
Okay. So I would think that we probably need to send it back. We can go ahead and do this today, this action, but I think the directive is to go back to the Tax Commission and let them analyze those decisions and see what they need to do internally to rectify that.
I totally concur, Counselor. That's what I was getting ready to suggest, is send it back with that directive, take a look at those votes that were by one, and then what you could probably do is you could remedy it with a, another vote. But it would depend on the matter. The matter could be Nolan Boyd itself. But nonetheless though, the spirit of your directive, I totally concur with.
Okay. So we can entertain a motion?
I didn't make the motion, I was just clarifying the issue.
So we're waiting for a motion?
Yeah, boy, I, I will get with Lyle, and I will get with Chairwoman Kathy tomorrow.
Okay. Make the motion. Motion is made by Daryl. Is there a second?
President Pratt, I'll second.
Sammy second.
Resolution 1536.
Okay. Call for the votes.
Daryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Loachey.
Yes.
Charles Itey.
Yes.
All right. So that Resolution 1536 to rescind is passed.
Can I just have a question about that? Don't we vet our commissioners?
Counselor, I don't have anything to do with the vetting.
I was just asking...
But the thing is though, you know what? I'm always for more and better vetting.
I am too. Yeah, that would, totally same, just...
Well, I think maybe, I think what needs to be done is there needs to be a standard operating procedure for making sure that they meet the eligibility, you have eligibility requirements regarding these kinds of things.
I would say any commissioners or board members must be Pawnees.
Or conflict, or look at conflict of interest as well, because we looked at those a lot of them.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move to item number two, which is the Presidential Committee Appointments. Council, you have before you the, if you see committee appointments, and many of them are not, haven't changed, the ones in blue. And so on the Grievance Committee is Brian Kirk and James Rice for, oh, I'm sorry, on item number five, Enrollment Committee, the Secretary takes that position, and Patricia McCray takes that position. And then number nine, the Grievance Committee, Brian Kirk and James Rice are placed on the Grievance Committee. On item number 15, the Proposal Review Committee, Charles Loachey is on there. We also need one more, so if anyone from here wants to be on the Proposal Review Committee, we will entertain that. On item number 22, now, I, I, I talked about this, about the possibility of this body, but I didn't ask you. I mean, we just talked about it, but I didn't ask you.
On what?
On item number 23.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. We talked about, officially, I didn't officially ask you, okay, all right. On the 23 Money Service Unit Board, Dr. Charles serve on there. The Standing Bear Memorial Representative, this year we have Daryl Walcott. And the rest are the same. You can see on there on the, we still have vacancies. The Environmental Regulatory Commission, we, and we're advertising, and especially the Utility Commission, if any of you want to serve on the Utility Commission, that, that one, we need that served. And I'm going to give you all a week... And I'm going to give you all a week, look, look at this a week, and if you want to serve on any of these, let me know, and if not, we're going to open it up to the tribal.
President Pratt, I think we have some issues regarding this. Do we, on number three, is that still our chairperson for the Election Commission? I thought that there was a red, they resigned?
The clerk and the alternate.
Okay. And what about, is on the 21, our Housing Authority Commissioners, is the first person, seat one, still doing that? Okay. Yeah, I'm just asking. Char, and Dr. Knight Chief is off of the TDC Board, number 25.
Yes.
So that should be fixed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, so we don't keep doing that.
Now, now, did we vote on this?
No.
Now, so this is just, just for your information?
Yeah. Information.
All right. So, at this time, we will move to item number three. Turn the time over to Angela, the Budget Committee Recommendations.
First item is approval of the 2017 Property Management Budget Mod to expend legal fees. This is, they're moving money around to pay for professional service fees or legal fees for the Kansas lands that were donated by the elderly couple that Sammy spoke of earlier. So this $1,200 will cover those expenses. Budget Committee reviewed and makes that, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion is made by Angela and seconded by Dr. Charles. Call for the vote.
Darryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Okay. Item number A, approval of 2017 Property Management Budget Mod to expend legal fees is approved. And so we move to item C, approval of elders Walmart Thanksgiving gift cards.
Okay. We determined that $6,000 would be the expense if we wanted to do the Walmart gift cards for the elders for Thanksgiving, and we were, in the next item agenda, the funds would come from the stipend line item. We had vacancies, and so we have that $6,000 savings in council's budget. So Budget Committee reviewed that and recommends approval, and I make that motion.
I second.
And Donna second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, may I comment on that one?
Yes.
I understood from a few elders last year that theirs was late, so if we could get those out, you know, first of November would be awesome. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote.
Darryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Okay, the elders Walmart Thanksgiving gift cards are approved. So, good. So we move to item D, approval of 2017 PBC Budget Mod, number nine.
This is the budget mod to cover those expenses, so we're moving them from stipends into that line item of donations. Budget Committee reviewed and recommends approval, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded by Sammy. Call for the vote.
Darryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Okay, so the 2017 PBC Budget Mod, number nine, is approved. We move to item number D, approval of tobacco rebate payment.
This was on the Budget Committee's agenda from the last meeting. They asked us to look at the total amount, that, that, of that request from the last meeting in regard to make it retroactive from January through August, and the amount that finance had came up with was $132,000, based on the actual receipts that we received from the state of Oklahoma for the tobacco rebate. And Budget Committee reviewed all options, and we are remaking the recommendation to meet them halfway and pay 50%. Some of the discussion was, is that it wasn't sent over to Tax Commission until March, and so to be fair, to try to work through that and compromise, we recommend a 50% payment of that $132,000, which is, comes down here.
$65,000.
Yeah. And I make that motion to approve.
Who's this money going to, Angela?
It's going to tobacco rebate. It will go to TDC's two smoke shops, is the Trading Post and the Travel Plaza, and then the TP Casino, or, yeah, TP Smoke Shop slash Casino.
Question?
Yes.
So this money's not just some pasture that comes to the rest and goes right back to them?
It has been, it, well, it's been on a ratio. It was a, what was the split before we just last little bit?
75-25.
Yeah. But that's what it is now, right?
73.
Okay. It was 75-25, and now it's a 70-30 split now. And so what it was, the tobacco rebate is money that we negotiated through the tobacco compact with the state of Oklahoma. Instead of keeping the money, meaning the tribe, we worked out to pass that dollars on to those.
Okay.
Yeah. So that they could be in competition with the cigarette market and also to get them into the casino.
So there was some kind of delay of the request, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, there was a three-month delay, and so to be fair and equitable across, we said we'd meet halfway.
Okay. So you made that?
I made that.
Second. Dr. Charles, seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Okay, the tobacco rebate payment is approved. So we move to item number four, which is discussion on Pawnee County MOU, Merrimack Road.
President Pratt? I am the one that asked to have that on there, on behalf of Iver Fields Jr. out of Merrimack. He's the mayor of Merrimack. And it's kind of cool, actually, and Georgia May is on the council. So it's all good. But anyways, apparently, Chris, and you can rightly or wrongly or whatever, but apparently we are going into an MOU with the city attorney, there was a problem with the city attorney's office, I guess, in approving our paperwork to go help them, am I right? You want to talk, speak to that?
I'll, I'll speak to it.
Okay, good.
I'll speak to it. Yeah, there was a question about whether or not we had entertained a, an MOU with the county of Pawnee, because we already have an MOU with Merrimack, and we have MOU with the city of Pawnee, but the question became, do we have the MOUs from the county of Pawnee? And, and the real answer is, we don't need an MOU with the county, though we are working on one. We have a meeting with the county commissioners next week to talk to them, but you don't, because the MOU is just between the nation and the township. And it's because, it's because our Department of Transportation has federal highway funds that can be expended for community development projects, as long as they're tangentially connected to, you know, highway, highway projects.
And they were real happy with that, because their roads are rolling up because of flooding. And I just saw Poncho at Hickory House in Cleveland for breakfast the other day, and he said that it was already resolved. But I wanted to bring it to council, just so we all know that we're doing some good stuff, you know, for, for our townships. We have Pawnees that live there, in that community, so they can't even get the fire trucks out, because the roads are so pitted from their flooding that it's a problem. So thank you for that. I wanted to just kind of highlight that, and thanks, Chris, and your team for doing that as well. It's awesome.
All right, well, thank you. It's been discussed. So we'll move to item number five, pres, excuse me, approval of Resolution 1765 TDC Appointment Seat Number Four. Now, it's my understanding, Appointment Seat Number Four is the remainder of Dr. Charles's seat, which ends...
About the 19th of the 19th, July 31st, 2019.
Of 2019, July 31st, 2019. So what you have in front of you, or you should have, are these little white pieces of paper? So let's fill out item TDC appointment, or...
President Pratt?
Seat number four.
We have two individuals that didn't interview, that they withdrew, and that would be Mr. Lyle Fields, and this was the justice. So you can cross their names out. We interviewed the other four.
Well, even though they don't interview, they're still on here, so...
I think they were just on here for, as a mistake.
No, Lyle, Lyle did withdraw, and so did Linda.
Yeah, so they officially withdrew.
Yeah, they officially withdrew.
Now, now Linda didn't.
Yes, she did.
That's what...
She told us what she did.
That's what she told Cindy to relate to us at interviews.
She withdrew.
Okay. Well, she called me and told me that she didn't, that she...
She told us that day that she did.
For our, for our number four?
Yeah. And, and six.
New vote?
Come on, new vote?
Just, just one at a time.
One at a time. Number four. Who's counting?
Secretary.
That's number four.
Just to fulfill the non-inspired term.
Isn't it better to do, to do both of them at once?
Yeah, we got two, two different resolutions.
Kenneth Quigley, one. Kenneth Quigley, one. Adrian Spotted Horse. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have a mic. Speaker. Thank you. Okay. Richard Norwell. Kenneth Quigley. Kenneth Quigley. Adrian Spotted Horse. Richard Norwell. Jimmy White Shirt. Adrian. And there's Linda Justice, but that, she's, she's not running, so...
So it looks like we're running out with our time between those three. Do you have any more of the things?
Uh, yeah, two, two, and two.
Two, two, two.
Just passing it back out. Just passing it back out.
Circle it. Circle the one.
Yeah, hand it back out and circle, circle it.
It doesn't matter who gets what. And just circle this time, they get circle. OX is a circle.
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 Circle this time. Circle.
Yeah, circle.
Wait, it was only between...
It was only those three.
Kenneth Quigley, Mr. Norwell.
I'm just going by the people, what they put in the circle.
You can't count that one, then. It's only between those three.
Yeah. Yeah. It should only be between Adrian, Norwell, and Quigley, because they both have two Ps, so... I'm just counting the circles, I'm sorry.
Just turn them, just give them back out.
But I turn them. Adrian, Norwell, or Quigley. On the back.
We got a ride on.
Adrian, Quigley, or Norwell. Oh, Norwell, sorry, can't read my mind.
It's okay, you start, can't read.
Between the three, between the three.
Right.
I thought we were riding on the back.
Did you ride, did you ride your name on the back?
That would be...
Okay. Go ahead and write your name on the back.
My name.
Are you the one guessing the set down there?
Hey, buddy.
All right, here, here we go. Everybody's up.
I wrote my name down, I put it on the back.
Read your names out loud now.
Okay. Norwell.
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 Adrian Spotted Horse. Adrian. Quigley. Adrian. Adrian. Quigley.
There we go.
Adrian.
All right.
And that's for seat four.
Seat four.
Okay, everybody, let's try to do this one time now. Seat number six.
We go ahead and go ahead. We need to make a motion.
Oh, okay, well, let's make a motion, since we're here.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1765 Appointing Adrian Spotted Horse to...
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Darryl Walcott.
Yes.
Patricia McCray.
Yes.
Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Sammy Adson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Charles Long Chief.
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Are we circling a name?
Now, exit.
This one leaves a check mark.
Check it, exit. This is a clean line.
Mine's not.
Mark out the two names.
White Shirt, Norwell, and Spotted Horse.
No, this will be Quigley, Mr. White Shirt, and Norwell.
Mark on Adrian, mark on Linda, and Lyle, and Norwell.
Yeah, not Adrian. Did you watch it?
Oh, man. Did you check it? Or did you write it? It's not...
Okay. Okay. Thanks, I think so, that's good, let's try this again. Quigley. 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 Norwell. White Shirt. Quigley. Quigley. Quigley.
Mr. Quigley. So we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1766 Appointing Kenneth Quigley to seat number six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, I think so, let's go, let's try this again. Quigley. 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 Norwell. White Shirt. Quigley. Quigley. Quigley.
Mr. Quigley. So we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 1766, appointing Kenneth Quigley to seat number six.
Is there a second now?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Daryl Walcott?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Ongy?
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes.
So Resolution 1766 is approved to appoint, uh, seat number six to Mr. Quigley. So we move to item number 11, which is open forum. Yes, sir?
To the council. The Pawnee Business Council. And this is for you to post in the Chodik Se Chodiks. What I've handed to council is a, uh, a code of ethics for the Pawnee Business Council. Hundred and forty-nine people voted for status quo. Nothing changes. Hundred and forty-three people voted for change. I've talked to a majority of these people that wanted change. And from what I heard, there were things that concerned me. This was the inspiration to write this code of ethics. It covers a lot of things that, the people that I spoke with. Integrity. Confidentiality. Confidence. Accountability. Conflict of interest. Conflict of, conflict of interest statements and official action. Judiciary duty. Economic interests. Tribal government contracts, restrictions and bid requirements. Gifts, awards, loans, reimbursements, and campaign contributions. Compensation. Miscellaneous amendments to the governmental code of ethics. Implementation and compliance filing of complaints. Notice. Termination to proceed. Response to notice. And fair hearings. In this section of fair hearings, I've included the Pawnee Business Council, the Nishawo Council, and the Attorney General. Now, the reason why I'm going to put it in the Chodik Se Chodiks is because I told my supporters, win, lose, or draw, I'm going to continue to fight for you. I'm not satisfied with status quo. I'll never be satisfied with status quo. And I will continue to fight for them. I made no promises during the campaign. Some people said I did. Some people wrote on Facebook that I did. Well, they're wrong. They're wrong. I made no promises to anybody. What I did say is I will fight for the people. I will fight for the Pawnee people. In the months to come, I will be drafting more paperwork. Because these hundred and forty-three people counted on me for change. And that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to continue on with change. I'm going to fight for them. I'm going to fight for those hundred and forty-three people that want to change. Including the Nishawo Council. Now, by putting it in the Chodik Se Chodiks, the people's going to take a look at this and say, well, it makes sense. It makes sense. And I've heard a lot of things during my campaign that doesn't sit well with me. And I know for sure it doesn't sit well with people, because they told me about these things. So, I'm going to ask that the council adopt these codes. The Attorney General, uh, the Nishawo Council. Let me give you a copy here. And I will continue to fight for the council as well. So, it's going to be up to the council to adopt these codes of ethics. Now, this is my first, first time also heard that other people write what I say to the people. Nobody writes anything for me. Nobody. I write my own articles. I write my own presentations. I wrote my own draft of the code of ethics for the Pawnee Business Council. Nobody wrote them for me. And nobody will ever write anything for me. Because it comes from here, and here, and listening to the people. So, I'm going to ask the council that they take a, a look at that. And also, these codes of ethics also protect employees. Now, I've heard some things from the employees. That's not really good. Didn't sit well with them, didn't sit well with me. And so there's like a, a protection of retaliation. Somebody asked me, why do you think people don't talk about things? I said, it's fear of retaliation. They're fear of losing their jobs. It shouldn't have to be that way. Nobody should be in fear of losing their job for notifying the council, the AG, the Nishawo Council, of any wrongdoing of any kind. TDC has their own, uh, codes of conduct, so to speak, I took a look at those. But, uh, the people say it's time for change. And I will continue that fight. Like I say, in the months to come, I will be presenting other things. I said I'd fight for them, and I'm going to fight for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is there anybody else? Anybody else for open forum?
May I ask a question? I really don't have a suggestion, but I'd like to ask a question. Um, do you plan to take any action toward Roger Smith? The, um, community would like to know. You know, we've been at the council for years to take some sort of action against Roger Smith until he really starts reporting the truth to the council, um, and can approve it. So, I don't know how you feel about that. Um, he, he was very helpful to me this evening, and I really appreciated it. Um, I don't think he did it because he wanted to, but because it was kind of put on the spot. But, you know, we've all noticed in the past that he feels that the casino is his, and it's ours. You've said that, all of you have, and I appreciate that, too. Um, but a lot of us are getting old, you know, Daryl's right with me. Uh, and you want to know what's going on. I'm sorry, Daryl, I have to come on. And we just really like to know what's going on. I don't want to cause any problems, I just want to know what's going on. You were talking about, um, something you read, um, or were talking about at the very first group, and I thought it was very interesting. But, um, do you have anything that we can read? You know, you're talking about all these things that are just so interesting at the business council level, but, uh, it's more or less that you're discussing it among yourselves when we would really like information on what you're discussing. Such as the land issues. Putting land into trust issues, the NCAA report. I would be very interested in reading that. Um, is there any way that you can bring those to the council meetings? Or at least give us some idea of, give us an office of whatever community is you're going to tell us?
Yeah, I can, I can, uh, do that, and maybe even upload some, some things that, uh, I don't know what, uh, how. Do you ever get on the Pawnee Nation website, do you ever?
I do, but I don't go on Facebook.
Well, I don't Facebook either.
I'm good.
Unless it's on my grandson. Uh, if it's about my grandson, I'm on there now. But, uh, I, I can upload some of those things. And, and, and it's, um, but there's tons of, tons of, I, I get tons of information. But I can pass it on.
Hey Bruce, I'm retired. And I also, I also reported through Chodik Se Chodiks on our, our land use management, um, goals, and, and, uh, I've reported out like that. And I didn't do it this last quarter, but I'll be glad to, um, submit. And try to keep everybody informed. It's real exciting, it's, uh, not the first time that we've had a donation. Um, I, I think a couple of times it kind of, you know, fell through the category, so to speak, because we don't have an SOP in place, and we really need an SOP in place on what do we do when this happens? And just kind of have a protocol, if you will, to, to know what to do. We're trying to stand that up now. This is the first venture for me.
A lot of volunteer to, to run up a beer, a bottle of beer, but, um, and wheelchair, I feel like we all, and...
I'm sure you could control those bicycles.
Donna?
Yes, I was wondering if we're going to look at some of the issues, um, with the election. You know, just looking at our, um, uh, election statute, and, and then also maybe the composition of the election commission. Schedule of time.
Sure.
I'd also ask that the council reaffirm its commitment to develop a comprehensive, uh, plan for the tribe. Uh, I know we have done some initial planning at TDC, and it's time to do that. And I want the, uh, council and TDC to sit together and make sure that our goals are in sync, and that we're, um, in unison on where we want to go, so that all factions of the tribe, hopefully, can move together in the same direction. If we all know where our goals are, then when, when we make reports, or when we do this and so, we can, um, measure them against our goals and our objectives of where the tribe wants to be. You know, do we want to have all renewable land here on the tribe? Or do we want to have silver for every, all tribal members? It sounds like behind the stage, but that's sometimes what, what the goals are. Make them, make them a goal, and then work toward them, and then let the people know how we're moving toward those goals. And if we have setback, let the people know what the setback is. People can understand then that we're all moving in the same direction. Please, start your strategic planning again.
I think there was, uh, we had that in work before.
Brian?
Four of us that are existing from the last council, we've got new council. And I think that we really need to know, yeah.
Brian Kirk, our, what is he, program planner?
Planning director.
Planning director. He is going to be sending out an email in the next couple of days, and looking at our calendar in November, and trying to get some dates, uh, that everyone can come and start our strategic planning.
Thanks. It's unfortunate, we don't have anybody to get a consultant. I know TDC had great consultant, right?
Oh, yeah. Daryl will do it for you. I did the last one.
Here's Moni.
Hello, council.
Hello.
One thing that I would like to say, and I've asked this, uh, I got a crack bridge over there. But, in articles, the TDC, um, you know, I've been working and working to have my own business over the years. And, uh, you know, an article that states in the, in the TDC that one of the goals for one of their, uh, things that they're doing is to help small businesses.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm, uh, and I brought it before the TDC board two years ago, I think maybe last year. Um, and nothing ever comes about. You know, I've had a business plan. And, you know, there's not, not only just me, but I'm talking about, um, other people out there that want to start their own business. Who have built a base, a foundation of, uh, you know, of, of a company, who just need that little bit, just to get you over that, to, to get you started. And, you know, I had mentioned, um, I believe at the end of last year, that I wanted to have be, uh, to have an option to be on that building up there. Um, because if I remember correctly, his lease was renewed in April, I believe. But, and I didn't follow up with that, because Ellis had passed away in March. So that kind of pushed things to the, way to the side. So, but I would like to see that, you know, that being one of the, maybe the goals and objectives that, you know, TDC, I know that some of the TDC board members are here, that they put that on their goals and objectives, that they, that they put it out there. Announce it, and, you know, they probably won't be able to now, because, you know, with the short law, I came in on the tail end of that, so, um, it sounds like there's some money problems there. That they won't be able to, you know, have that money. You, you know, some people may only need like ten thousand or fifteen thousand. I could have used twenty-five thousand, you know, a year ago to get me a food truck. It's part of the violence too much. And so that, that was, would be one of the things to where, um, it would have been easier, not only for me, I know that he's worked on trying his own business, and I'm not going to speak for him, but I know there's some other people that have given that opportunity, and they come up with a business plan, and present it, and meet with them. And, you know, that maybe it could, it could build their future, it can build their... I mean, I'm forty-nine years old, and I'm going to go back to school. Because, you know, and that's, that's, starting my own business right now isn't an option, right? It isn't an option anymore. Because, and it was, it was all these years ago. But it's not now, because of my situation. Because there's no stability, and it's high risk, as we all know, in the, in that, in owning your own business. It's a lot of work. You got to be dedicated. And I've been doing this for five years. And had, uh, and I don't point fingers, but I kind, but I kind of am. Because I, I would have liked to have had that option that available to me four or five years ago. Maybe I wouldn't be in this situation right now, maybe I'll be a little bit more comfortable to where I don't have to go back to school. But who knows? But I'm just saying, I, I would hope that with this, that, um, maybe that, that would be put out there, with, because I know that TDC and PBC, that they'll have, you know, Daryl has mentioned about these meetings, strategic, goal planning meetings. And maybe we can put that out there for younger ones that are coming up. Give them that opportunity. Yeah, it's high risk. But it's in those articles that that's part of the plan that they're to do. Let's hold them to that. Let's try and help these younger ones that are coming up. That, you know, that work hard. I work hard, it's hard work. I work my tail off. You know, and so let's get those other... You know, and so, let's give those others that opportunity to do that. Otherwise, they may not have the credit or, you know, for whatever reason. And, you know, it, it can, that, that can make, twenty thousand can make a big difference. It would have made a big difference to me. It's twenty thousand that I didn't have. Yeah, it's high risk, but I had a business plan. I'm not a dumb Indian. I built my business up, it's gone well. I do catering, catering to the capital once a month. I do, I go to state representatives' homes and cater for them. How come, you know, I, I was just frustrated that I presented that to the board years ago and again last year. And wasn't given that option. Because that, that's, that's our enterprise up there. And I'm Pawnee. Mama is full-blood Pawnee. So I hope that you all will take that, put that on your goals and objectives and put, kind of push for that. For the younger ones, for small businesses to help them. Maybe to help them get a foot forward. They may be successful. But we don't ever know until we try. Until we give them that opportunity. That's all I wanted to share.
Can I comment? Daryl, could you just take that message back?
I would like to comment on that. There are a lot of initiatives that we have done on TDC as a, and as a board member, I could speak to them because a lot of them are my initiatives. One is that planning thing, we need a whole plan so that, as I said earlier, so we can move forward. When we have our TDC meetings, we need to have those goals and objectives up there and report on them every, every month when we meet. So we know where we're at, I need, need to get a point in time. And this thing about, uh, people coming and wanting new business, yes, we need to do that. And we have started another initiative that we're working on right now, and that is when people come and, and we as a board want to know everybody that comes. If somebody comes and makes a, um, asks the executive director, uh, that they would like to start a business, we want to know about it. And what we want to do, what we're doing now is we're looking at criteria to help judge those things to see how feasible they might be. And put some criteria to that so we treat everybody fairly. So yes, those plans are in the works, and there are people sitting here that have been on the Tribal Valment Corporation a long time ago, and those things haven't been started. And Moni, I don't remember you bringing a business plan, but if you've got one, bring it.
It was three years ago.
If it was three years ago, maybe I wasn't on the board then. But, uh, you know, let's, we're working hard. I mean, I'm just one person on that board. I've been on there a while and I'm doing the best I can, but you got to have some support, and I think we're getting that support. And there are some things that needs to be changed, but those things will be dealt in executive session with the board. Does that, does that work?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, just so that you take that back. Maybe they can get something going, you know, with small business, uh.
Yeah, I'm, we're on one of these meetings before.
But you said it here, so I've been on it that long.
It's three years.
So if you got it, then bring it, and we will, we will look at it.
I want to ask you, how many Pawnees are on the TDC board? Four. Four of them, how many?
Um, six right now. We just appointed two, uh, one other Pawnee and one not Pawnee.
Okay.
So that, that'll be five.
So they're on six board members?
There's eight.
Eight, and there are four Pawnee?
There'll be five.
Be five? So you are considering the Pawnee including the first, or you're all?
Well, there's, um, I believe, I think according to the articles that the ratio is like four to three, or something like that?
Or five to three?
I don't know, that can always be changed. Oh, yeah. But the other issue too, Kay, is that we as a council have had very difficult filling these commissions and boards. Getting qualified people to apply for them and, and that make the eligibility requirements. And that's, that's a struggle in itself.
If I was in a wheelchair, I'd be on the board, but I don't know where to get there.
All right, anything else?
I'll bet your board will all be okay.
Well, Daryl's your friend and he's, he's.
I had to be helped around too.
All right, well, we, we thank you for your attendance this evening. And we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is made by Angela Prezzer. And Dr. Charles seconds, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you.